Good evening. If everyone would stand please, Councilman Miller's gonna have the prayer. And remain standing for the pleasure of the ladies.
I pray. Dear Father, we just want to thank you dear God for this day that you blessed us with. We want to thank you for loving us, thank you for forgiving us of our sins dear Lord, and just want to thank this town we live in, this great country. And just please give guidance and direction to the council when we conduct the city's business tonight. We pray and ask these things. Your only name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Hicks, please show for the record that all councilmen are present. Gentlemen in your packet, you'll see the minutes for September 6th regular session and September 8th work session. If you would look over those if there's any questions.
I will.
Say your motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Please catch your vote. Five oh, Mr. Hicks. Mr. Mayor, we have some recognition tonight.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a group of young people that actually has served our city in a great capacity from a standpoint of representing us as some of the finest ambassadors that I know. And not only from a standpoint of sports, but also from a standpoint of just fine young men and being able to conduct themselves in a manner that was very befitting. And I know the parents that are here are very proud of their children. And let me also thank you for the job that y'all have done with your parents, or with your children, in being able to bring them up in a fashion that represents you very, very well. And with that, I'd like to read the certificates that will be passed out tonight. And it's a sports board certificate competitively representing wire grass and Enterprise Alabama while competing with great pride and dedication in shipping out a six state championship and for winning the Dixie Boys fourteen year old state championship. And I'd like to start by thanking Zachary Hunter Thayer, okay? Is he here tonight? Come on up, Zach. Ben Bailey. Ben Bailey. He's not here. Colin Marsh. Ethan Stetson. Dylan Darrell. Rody Keen. Kay Brunson. Cooper Charlton. We come this way. Connor Cow. Clayton Dunn.
Well, when y'all fill up, y'all showing up coming by me.
Logan McCarthy. Drew Williams. Clint Levine. Kid Coach, Jason Brunson. Assistant Coach, Brad Martin. Assistant Coach, Ryan Brunson. Assistant Coach, Chris Thomas. Ladies and gentlemen, before I ask our players to sit down, are the parents, or any of the parents of the players here, please raise your hand and stand. Stand up. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you again, congratulations. Junior Dixie Boys certificate reads the same. Matt Brown. Lane Natcher. Tate Easterling. Cole Hooper. Trey Kavanagh. Hunter Summerall. Caleb Cow. Nick Edgar. Tim Cody. Parker Sexton. McCain Stevie. Wyatt Waddell. Head Coach, Steve Marvill. Assistant Coach, Steve Easterling. And Assistant Coach, Hudson Hooker. All right, can I ask the parents of these young people, please stand and be ready? Let's give them a round of applause. Hold on rookie. Certificate reads the same. Wiley Wilpers, the second, or the winner, the winner. Aiden White. Dylan Skinner. Hal Sexton. Bernie Nix. Colton McLean. Jade Harries. Dylan Rafflin. Reese Dowd. Tustin Cole. Owen Burrows. Kristen Bartley. Head Coach, Scott Harrington. Assistant Coach, Adam Nix. Assistant Coach, Michael Rafflin. All right, for the parents that are here for these children, could I ask them to stand and be recognized? All right, gentlemen, you can be seated. Billy, would you like to say your word?
Mayor, thank you. My team wants to tell that this is a group of good young men. As you said before, along with the parents, coaches, again, we want to thank you for your time and effort spending with these teams and these players and leading them the right way. And again, Mayor and Council, we want to thank you all as well for your support because this could not happen without y'all participating enough to make it happen. Again, this is getting our council, our mayor.
All right, well, thank y'all. And we are very proud of y'all and everything that y'all have accomplished, but more importantly, have y'all, y'all's character. When y'all go out into these other cities, they look at that and they, y'all are representing Enterprise and y'all have done a wonderful job. So, thank y'all for that. Y'all are more than welcome to stay. If not, y'all, you are invited to leave if you would like, but you are more than welcome to stay. Thank y'all for coming. And that means us too, huh? And that means us too. All right. Mr. Mayor, I think we have another presentation. Mr. Robert Green is here from Purple Heart.
We do this, Chairman, if you would, I'd like to ask all the councilmen to come down to the podium. Mr. Green?
You want me to run that?
I want you to handle it.
Oh, you can do that? All right. You got the floor, Mr. Green?
I got the floor. Okay, well, I'm gonna turn it over to Jim McDonald. He's gonna make the presentation for the city on behalf of the Purple Heart. All of us, combat wounded, Jim, he'll take it over.
All right. Mayor, City Councilman, and Citizens of Enterprise, as we know, Enterprise has been recently designated a Purple Heart City in Alabama. And I would like to present to all of you with these fine signs that we're gonna be able to display at our locations on Major Avenue coming into Enterprise, designating and letting other people know that we have a Purple Heart City, a little Chinese jewel in the middle of Alabama there. These signs are located at the major entries into the city. We need one or two more so we can get those together for you to do. These signs are donated on behalf of the Military Order of the Purple Heart of the United States of America. Ughwick Roberts was spending a lot of time putting this together. He's got about fifteen combat wounded brothers that are joining him to start a Purple Chapter. Also alongside him, Enterprise Printing, Mickey Hatfield, who's not here today, Veterans Cleaning Solutions, and we wanted to express our deepest gratitude to Mr. Green for taking his personal time to be able to do this, not only for his organization, he's helped combat wounded, but for the city and Enterprise as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'd like to also recognize, if you'll allow me just a moment, to recognize Councilman Marcus. He actually, I think you and him started the conversation. He brought it in a work session in front of the council, and it was unanimous that we moved forward with it. And it's an absolute honor to be able to participate and proud to have the recognition of the Purple Heart City and truly do, I think it's patriotism at the highest level. Councilman Marcus, would you like to say your word?
Mr. Green did come to my office and speak to me about it, and I thought it was a great idea. And the mayor and council also thought it was a great idea when I brought it to them. So, he had worked very diligently on this and getting this, taking, getting this handled. Jason Wright and Kay Kirkland have also spent a number of hours with different organizations, and we'd like to thank them also. But I'd like to thank the other council members for helping this get done, and the mayor.
All right, let's, by good, any of the council members, y'all come in.
I'd like to be, you know, glad that we're a Purple Heart City and we'd just like to say thank you to have more cities come on forward.
Absolutely.
We're working on getting more cities. And if any of y'all know any Purple Heart citizens here in Enterprise, please, please ask them to come wherever meeting October the fourth at the, if that is, if that is, at five thirty to start elect officers for the chapter that we're starting.
If we could ask the media to help us get that word out, we'd certainly appreciate it. All right, all right, thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
I appreciate you.
I thought they won't call you for a shot. Come on home. They said y'all, y'all get, y'all come together like you love one, yeah? In a Christian way. All right, got them, Kay? Everybody got them? All right, thank you again.
Thank y'all again for bringing this to our attention. It's a great thing that y'all are doing for everyone. All right, at this time, privilege of the floor, if there's anyone that would like to speak to the council, please come to see Mr. Hicks. Okay, there's not, there's no old business, moving on to new business. Introduce Ordinance Zero Nine Twenty Sixteen, providing for the renewal of a franchise agreement with Alabama Power Company for a ten-year period effective January third, two thousand seventeen. The agreement gives Alabama Power the right to construct, erect, suspend, install, renew, repair, maintain, operate, and conduct the transmission, distribution, or sale of electricity current for all purposes inside the city limits and the police jurisdiction. This is going to lay over until the next meeting, and the next thing is, yes, sir?
If I may, I'd like to ask John Klein, he's here from Alabama, if you could give him a word of a standing here, um, stand for, for a second.
Hey, Mr. McLean?
Thank you. We need the franchise, you know, it helps us with right of ways, and that's basically the way it gives us permission to get on the city's rights away. It makes our work simpler, and we don't have to come down and get a document every time we set a poll or move a poll or subdivide and approve, you know, we can get on that, on the rights away that the city owns. And that's basically the extent of what the franchise does for us.
This franchise plays a major role in our budgeting for the year. It's actually for our ten-year agreement with Alabama Power, it's three percent inside the city limits, one and one half, one and a half percent in the police jurisdiction. And this is no more than housekeeping at this point in time.
Okay. Is there any questions? There's not? Thank you, Mr. McLean.
All right, thank you.
And like I said, I will lay this over until the next meeting. Next is introduce and call for consideration of resolution oh nine twenty sixteen, providing for the adoption of the FY two thousand seventeen city operating budget of fifty-five million eight hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. Gentlemen, y'all have all received a budget at the, either the last work session or from Mr. Hicks. It is also in your packet, and at this time, I'll call on Mr. Hicks to go over anything that he needs to.
As you stated, Councilman Marcus, the budget, fifty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars.
Fifty-five million.
Fifty-five million, okay. As you know, the primary source of funds for the city is the general fund. That amount is thirty-four million eight hundred seventy-nine thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars. And that is about a two-point-six million increase, and that's primarily as a result of about five percent growth in sales taxes. And also, we'll be using funds that were carried over, that will be carried over this year and the next year to complete some projects for the general fund and other capital projects in the city. The capital projects budget is six-point-eight million dollars, and that basically is a combination of general funds and bond money that's been used to carry on current projects, as well as some grant funds that we get from the state and federal government to carry on those projects as we progress. We've got a sewer disposal fund budget of four million dollars. Our debt service fund is seven-point-seven million dollars. That's about an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar increase, and that would be primarily due to the airport project where we borrowed money for hangars for the airport that are being repaid from leases, as well as co-opted with a water board for the installation of meters and the, for performance contracting purposes. Then we have several other funds that the city manages. Again, the total budget, fifty-five eight sixty-two nine fifty-one. The general fund, again, thirty-four million, that includes basically the operation of the city on a day-to-day basis, including the Senior Citizen Center. Some capital projects that are planned for the budget this year would be city hall improvements. It'll be the completion of a demolition grant. It would be an FHWA project that'll be funded by grant revenues. Sidewalk projects that have been ongoing for several years that will be continued, and that will be primarily done from state funding. It will also include some work for the new fire station and some renovation to Bates Memorial Stadium. One new item this year that is a half-million dollars been allocated for improvements that will be deemed necessary and will be determined later for the College Street. Again, that's a half-million dollars that'll be set aside in this budget for the College Street Elementary School. And then the other funds, debt service funds, sewer disposal funds, expenditures will be spent accordingly for those type purposes. A breakdown of grant expenditures this year, we will be receiving about two million dollars in grant, we'll have, I'm sorry, we'll expend two million dollars in grant funds this year, and we'll have approximately one-point-seven million dollars in grant funds coming in from those sources. So, we'll net grant expenditures of two-hundred-fifty-six thousand dollars for the upcoming year. And there's several, there's a long list of items that will be distributed for equipment to the various projects, and all making the budget fifty-five million dollars, as we said earlier. And basically, our approach is to budget conservatively in terms of expenses, hopefully a little higher expenses, and, excuse me, and lower on, that we got more revenues. We budget low on revenues, hoping they'll come in high, we budget high on expenses, hoping they'll come in low. And that's kind of been our approach to things over the years. And it's worked out for us and will leave us with, we try to keep a four-point-two million dollar reserve fund. If we, assuming we spend everything and take everything in this year, we would be around six, seven million dollars left over to carry over to the next year, and that gives us cushion to do some additional projects, some unforeseen items that may come up and to carry on the city's growth and help address some other items. One of the main things, it's also included in the budget, is a revision of the pay plan. And I'll tear that, turn that up to me.
One of the things that, if you'll recall, at our work sessions, we had a mandate down from the federal government for those employees that were salaried. And the federal government wants them to make forty-seven thousand dollars a year. I actually commissioned both Steve and Christina, our HR Director, to come up
I actually commissioned both Steve and Christina, our H R director, to come up with a plan that would, one, fit our budget, but, two, satisfy the mandate that was passed down from the federal government. I'd like to ask Christina now to come up and share with the council our findings from a standpoint of pay increases to accommodate those mandates that's been placed on us.
Good evening. As Mayor stated, the catalyst of this was basically for the federal mandate that we knew was coming, that Steve and I had been watching, but we were waiting for the final ruling to come down. We had been reviewing the pay plan for the last year because we knew there were areas that needed us looking at, but the catalyst of all of it was the overtime ruling. What this revision of the pay plan does, we will be moving basically each, each position up a grade, and positioning those positions to the same, basically the closest salary with a two percent cost of living. The main areas that we were looking at, as well as fixing the overtime mandate to bring those people that we had close, that we needed to move to the forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-six, were also police and fire. With this one grade adjustment and the two percent cost of living, it will move police and fire from starting salary of twenty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars to thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight. This will help us with recruitment and retention of those two departments, as well, it helps with our entry-level positions such as sanitation, and to give y'all an example of that, the starting salary for a sanitation worker was seventeen thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. With this revision of the pay plan, it would move their starting salary to nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The overall impact to the budget would be three-point-seven percent, and that, the federal mandate for the overtime ruling goes into effect, we have to be in compliance by December first. So, to do that, we are making this effective, or we are recommending that this become effective November thirtieth.
Well, share with them, we had a four percent increase in our health insurance. One of the things that we started a year ago was cost sharing, that health insurance increase, our, my recommendation, along with Christina's recommendation, and hopefully Steve's recommendation, to adopt the budget, would be to cost share that family portion of the health insurance coverage, and that would be approximately five sixty-six per pay period.
Five seventy-six.
Five seventy-seven, five seventy-seven per pay period. So, gentlemen, that's our recommendation to you is to pass the budget with the pay, pay scale, the new pay scale with it, and with the cost sharing of health insurance benefits with the employees from families' endpoint, making it effective on the pay raise November thirtieth. That gets us closer, as far as the police and fire increase, that gets us closer to the surrounding areas, doesn't it?
Yes, sir, it gets us closer, it helps, it helps somewhat, but it gets us closer to helping with recruitment and retention of those police officers and firefighters.
Let me also emphasize that it's not only police officers, our first responders, I can go through every department, Allen being one of them, has a hard time, and it will impact all departments from a standpoint of recruitment, and most importantly, recruitment's great, but retention's even better. The longer you're able to maintain that employee, that's money in the bank, that experience, you don't want it walking out the door. Thank you, Ms. Green. Is there any questions? Okay, gentlemen, y'all have heard the recommendation, the budget, I will entertain a motion if there's no questions.
Of course, we will accept the recommendations coming from our human resources director.
Thank you, motion?
Yeah, have a motion in a second, if there's no discussion, please cast your vote. Five-oh, Mr. Hicks. Introduce and call for consideration of resolution oh nine twenty sixteen dash A, providing for the amendment of ordinance ten sixteen oh one, which establishes the employee classification plan salary schedule. The amendment calls for the establishment of a position of Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, pay grade nine. Well, could I be recognized? Yes, sir. From that point, one of the things that we've made a conscious effort to move forward to is, is a redundancy, establishing assistant department heads, so that in the event that something were to happen to a department head, whether they find a better position somewhere else, or whether they literally have a health problem, that we have someone that'll be a backup to the department head, and it just makes good sense and good business. Yep. Any questions?
Are we eliminating any positions when we're creating this?
No. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Excuse me, for clarification, we have consolidated some, but we're not, we have not eliminated any.
You're not adding.
You're not adding anything.
You're taking an existing position and upgrading it, is what you're doing.
Correct.
You're not adding any positions.
And we've left a position open that if it calls for it in the future, that has an.
I know we've had some retirements in that department, and this is, this is just changing the title of those.
Basically, and adding more responsibilities in areas, and actually giving a fine definition, so that we can have that assistance. Any other questions, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like a motion, we adopt.
Seven. Got a motion in a second, if there's no discussion, please cast your vote. Five-oh, Mr. Hicks. I'd like to recognize Rayner Cotter, City Attorney, who will present details of a proposed settlement of the Cowpen Creek Sewer Project dispute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, I'm pleased to report to you, first of all, I know you're generally familiar with the Cowpen Creek Sewer Outfall project and the lawsuit that's related to it, the police issue. I'm pleased to report to you that we have tentatively settled that matter, subject to your approval. The settlement will involve the bonding company on the job paying the city eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. The other parties in the suit have settled their disputes between themselves, of course, the city's not paying any money, the city's receiving the money, and I want to thank Mayor Bolz very much for his hard work in connection, we had a mediation, and the mayor was, despite his busy schedule, attended the mediation, was there the whole time, and really helped out. So, I would just ask for, I would recommend that you approve the settlement, and ask you to give authority for the mayor to execute an appropriate settlement agreement. Be glad to answer any questions, again, I know you know, generally, in an executive session, one of the things that executive sessions for, we have to brief you, relate to lawsuits.
Any questions for Cotton?
Yeah, that's been going on a long time.
It is.
Any other questions for?
I'd like to make a motion, we accept the settlement, and we allow the mayor to sign all settlement documents. Second motion.
Got a motion and a second, if you would please cast your vote. Five-oh, Mr. Hicks. Introduce and call for consideration of a request from Glenn Morgan of Poly Engineering Inc. to seek bids for the N R C S Airing Drive Gully Stabilization Project. Is there any questions about this? Okay, if not, yes, sir. Chairman, you have a grant that has been awarded, and that will help move, start moving this forward, so that we can fix that stabilization issue up there at the end of Airing Drive.
What kind of, was there a match to that?
I want to say it was a hundred percent grant, Glenn, I just can't remember at this time. Seventy-five twenty-five, I apologize, I apologize for not knowing that. Councilman Johnson. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion for the request.
Make a motion, will you?
So, got a motion in a second, if there's no discussion, please cast your vote. Five-oh, Mr. Hicks. Introduce and call for consideration of change order number two, final submitted by Poly Engineering Inc. for the reduction of two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-four-hundred dollars and sixty-two cents in the total contract price, uh, price to Wiregrass Construction Company, Inc. for the two thousand fourteen street improvements project. The change order summarizes miscellaneous changes that have occurred during the project construction, and adjusts the total contract amount to two million eight hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. The time provided for the completion of the contract is unchanged. Is there any questions about this, and if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move.
Got a motion in a second, if there's no discussion, please cast your vote. I always like reductions in these contracts. Okay, under contract billing, number one, Wiregrass Construction Company, Inc., estimate number ten, final, ten thousand dollars, construction two thousand fourteen street improvements. Number two, Poly Engineering, Inc., invoice one six four eight three, in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and six cents. Contract, excuse me, construction engineering design, two thousand fourteen street improvements. Number three, Bullard Escavation, Inc., estimate number one, thirty-eight thousand dollars, contract, site, work, utilities, fire station number four. Number four, K P S Group, invoice number one, four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, contract services, College Street Cultural Arts Center and Museum Study. Number five, Time Clock Plus, invoice four zero zero seven seven eight, in the amount of six thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and eighteen cents, contract services, annual renewal of systems support contract. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to pay contract billing.
So, move.
Got a motion in a second, if there's no discussion, please cast your vote. Five-oh, Mr. Hicks. Introduce and call for consideration of the following travel requests, E nine one one, Lon Jones, E nine one one coordinator, two thousand sixteen Gulf Coast E N E N A Conference, October fourteenth, excuse me, October eleventh through the fourteenth of two thousand sixteen, in Orange Beach, Alabama. Estimated cost, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and fourteen cents. And that is it for travel requests, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move.
Got a motion in a second, if there's no discussion, please cast your vote. Five-oh, Mr. Hicks. Next, call and introduce and call for consideration of a request to set the city's official, official hours for trick-or-treating Halloween is on Monday, October thirty-first, from five thirty P M. to seven thirty P M. Is there any questions about this, if not?
The same time we did it last year, right.
Yes. Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Y'all already got one.
Yeah, I got one from Councilor Donaldson, and a second from Councilman Cooper, please cast your vote. Five-oh, Mr. Hicks, and that leads us to the mayor's report, Mr. Mayor.
Give you a quick update, Miss Chairman, Parks and Recreation, scheduled tournaments for U S S A Girl softball tournament is scheduled October the first with two thousand sixteen, U S Travel baseball team is scheduled to play October the eighth with forty-four teams, youth football season has begun, youth basketball registration will begin October the seventeenth. Gentlemen, it is with absolute joy that I announced that D O T. called me this morning, and said that we would be receiving an approval letter to get ready to go out to bids for the sidewalk project from Watts up to the grocery market. So, we will hopefully have that for you to act upon and give permission to go out and bid next council meeting. On the opposite end of that spectrum, it is with absolute regret that I have to announce and let you know that Mr. Hicks, our city clerk and treasurer, has submitted his resignation and retirement effective September the thirtieth. You'll be going to Donaldsonville, Georgia, as I understand it, to serve there in a capacity, and would like to say openly to the audience, as well as to the council, Steve, I'm telling you, for sixteen years, I feel like we've been joined at the hip, and I'm gonna miss you, I truly am, and I wish you all the best in the world, I truly do. And I appreciate the work that you have done here tirelessly to support not only the citizens of this town, but also to support this council and the mayor. So, thank you so much. With that, gentlemen, I would like to ask permission to go and start the advertising process, in lieu of trying to fill Mr. Hicks's position, probably take sixty days to get resumes back in or start that process, but we need to start as quickly as we can as far as with the advertisement of this position.
Y'all heard the request?
I make a motion, we grant the mayor permission to go out for resumes.
Second. Yeah, I have a motion in a second, please cast your vote. Five-oh, Mr. Hicks. Thank you, gentlemen, that's all I have to report on.
I too would like to, you know, what the mayor has said about Mr. Hicks, the years that I have served with you, and we have enjoyed it, and we've seen a lot of progress, and of course, you're gonna trade in your bowie pen and put on a Georgia peach. So, however way, we do hope that everything will go well with you, and I would like to thank everybody for coming, and I would like for the boy scouts to stand and be recognized. Thank you very much.
Councilman Johnson.
Hi, Steve. Just want to say, thank you, you're a friend, and will always be a friend, and we appreciate the job you have done for the City of Enterprise, and we're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Thank everyone for coming tonight.
Councilman Donaldson.
Steve, I also like to thank you for all the hard work you've done for the City of Enterprise, and especially for the council and the mayor, and we're gonna miss you, but good luck.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Councilman Miller.
Steve, same thing, I'll echo what everybody else said, you've done an excellent job in your capacity here with City of Enterprise, and the citizens are gonna be losing a good city clerk treasurer, and just thank you for what you've done, and wish you the best of luck over in Donaldsonville, and thank all our guests for coming.
Steve, it's gonna be hard to replace you, you're a good guy, and you've done, I've only been here four years, but I've learned a lot from you, and I'd like to thank you for that, and I just hope we can, the city can get somebody half as good as you. Gentlemen, if I could, I'd let you know that we do have a redundant system in place, don't fear. Beverly and Danielle, we'll be, we'll be meeting with them on Friday, and we'll continue business as usual, so. And Beverly will do a great job, and I'd like to thank everyone for coming, and if not, if there's nothing else, we will be dismissed until October.